But we want to get started, we have three here now. So, first thing I want to do is first thank everyone for coming in. I think this is a very important meeting and we're very happy to have it and to host it. And next, the ones that's here, if we could just go around and kind of go around the room and if I can introduce themselves, it would be appreciated. We'll just start here.
Angel Frasch, Chief Deputy Chamber Counsel.
Jake Hudson, Deputy Director for Community Services, Department of Mental Health.
Cindy Ray, General Nelson for the Department of Mental Health.
Kelly Breland, Chief Financial Officer, Department of Mental Health.
Wendy Bailey, Executive Director, Department of Mental Health.
Scott Belios, Harrison County, or State Senate Harrison County.
Kevin Felcher, District 117, Representative.
Isabel Cap, Bullock C. S. Harold, Representative.
Karen Ross, Bullock C. S. Harold, Representative.
I'm Stephen Allen, I'm with the Office of the Coordinator of Mental Health Accessibility with Department of Finance and Administration.
I'm Don Steinle, I'm Chief Financial Officer for Pineville Mental Health Care Resources.
Dr. Rita Porter, Director of Adult Services at Pineville Mental Health.
Alex Daring, I'm the Director of Coastal Operations for Pineville.
Mona Gudche, Executive Director for Pineville Mental Health Care Resources.
Tricia Tissell, Voice Holden.
Tim Holloman, Voice Holloman, Board Attorney.
John McAdams, Harrison County Chamber Clerk.
Morgan Wagner, Harrison County Board of Supervisors.
Kent Jones, Harrison County Board of Supervisors.
Rebecca Powers, Harrison County Board of Supervisors, District 2.
Harrison County Sheriff, Fort Higgin.
Okay, good deal. And once again, I want to extend our thanks to elected officials for coming in. I don't think we'd get much done without our state representatives. So, now that we have got started, I guess I want to turn it over to, turn it over to, if John wants to speak and to kind of get us started.
Well, this all resulted from Representative Felcher is on a subcommittee or a committee, a small committee chaired by Kit Nico, CEO of Memorial, and I think there was a task that the committee had given Representative Felcher and he can take it from there because that's how this meeting has come about.
Sure.
Okay, sir.
Yeah. So, first of all, thank you all for hosting. And what happened was Director Bailey and I had a meeting preceding a meeting that Park McAdams called where we discussed some of the problems that we're having with the RIT system and the overall problems and deficiencies with Harrison County's mental health system and the transition with Pineville. And what Director Bailey and I talked about is maybe it would be a great idea for her and her team to come and answer some of the questions that the board had, shed some light on some things and possibly come with some solutions that might help. So, that's why we're here today and again, I appreciate you all for having us, appreciate you coming.
Okay. All right. I won't recognize it.
Director Bailey, say if she has anything.
Yes. We're just kind of, kind of winging this meeting. Yeah, you want to come on up, that'd be fine.
Okay, and I have some handouts, is that okay?
Good, good.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll start out by saying I'm old fashioned, I still kill a lot of trees unfortunately and print things, I'm not that much into the digital age, but thank you.
You're not alone.
I know I'm not, there's still some of them. I appreciate you all having us today and allowing me and my team to come and I appreciate Representative Felcher also offering this as well. So, I am, at the request of Representative Felcher, I'm going to kind of give you an overview of the Department of Mental Health and of the services that we have, kind of how the system is structured. And then my Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Kelly Breland, is going to kind of go over the budget with you as well. So, you have some slides here that I was going to speak from and I can move quickly through them because I know that your time is precious, but I do kind of want to be able to highlight just a few things. I've been in this role since the end of January as the new Executive Director, but I've worked with the agency for 16 years. And mental health is absolutely a passion of mine and I think having better awareness and understanding of the system is one of the ways to bring people together to try to solve it. And I know that you are all working at the table with Pineville to try to bring some solutions to this, so we appreciate that. So, one of the, one of the first things I just want to talk about is how the system is structured. So, the state's public mental health system basically has three components to it. And the first is the state-operated programs and those are the programs that are directly operated by the Department of Mental Health. So, you have state hospitals and then you also have ADD regional programs, that's for individuals who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. And we have programs across the state for that as well. And then also alcohol and substance use treatment. So, in some states, you have Department of Mental Health who may only focus in on mental health or maybe mental health and A and D, but in Mississippi, all three fall under the umbrella of the Department of Mental Health. So, it's not just individuals who have serious mental illness. Then you also have your regional community mental health centers, which as all of you know are part of county government and they are set up with a structure of the supervisors appoint commissioners and the commissioners select an executive director and it's supposed to be a good working relationship within the county. And then they receive funding from the Department of Mental Health for grants and then we also certify community mental health centers to where they have to follow the operational standards that we set forth. And then you also have other nonprofit service organizations that are certified providers through the Department of Mental Health who also have to follow those operational standards.
Ms. Bailey, I don't want to interrupt you at all, you're doing great, but just from my own knowledge, this is the question that I have.
Okay.
When we say on number two, regional community mental health centers supervisors, we let commissioners, commissioners let the ED, and then you said we help, they help administer grants.
That's right.
Is there a certain amount of money, besides grants, is there a certain amount of money that each county is given from your office per our size or is it just grants are available and you help us administer that?
It's grants that are available and there's, there's actually different pots of money for that as grants as well.
Okay.
So, some of those grants come from general funds from the legislature that we receive and then we give to the community mental health centers.
Okay.
And there's also federal grants as well that come from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration.
Thank you.
SAMSA. And then we take those funds and then we grant those out to the community mental health centers as well. A large portion of those are what we call block grant funds.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And absolutely stop me at any time you have a question.
I'm going to ask you a question, see if I picked up on this. I know the federal court, the Justice Department is involved with the mental health situation in the state of Mississippi and it appears that where we're heading is that the state is going to be pressured to provide more local services and reduce the in-house hospitalizations and whatever. So, that seems to be the trend now. And when that trend occurs and it comes down to providing local services for people in need of those, of mental health services, that probably is going to increase the level of the local funding. So, that's going to kind of fall back on us throughout, probably throughout a mental health organization like Pineville. So, it's going to increase the local funding and I think where we're coming from and what we're looking for, just like with the issue we're talking about with the RITS and having to provide those services through our CSU's, et cetera, are we going to be able to, or in your opinion, and that probably with Scott and Kevin, are we going to be able to get assistance through the state, through the state either mental health budgets or through the state in some way to help us with the cost of providing those services since it's going to probably through the federal orders, through the federal government and through the state, come down to the locals and we're having to pay for that. We're going to have to pay for most of that or a good bit of it. Can we look for assistance either through grants as Rebecca talked about or state legislature helping us or through y'all's budget?
Yes, sir, and that's what we're actually doing right now through a lot of the new grants that we've issued, especially over the last two years. So, you're right, the Department of Justice lawsuit is around Homestead. So, it is the deinstitutionalization of individuals. It's that individuals are treated in their local communities and unless absolutely necessary, they don't have to be institutionalized out of state hospital. So, it, when, when Mr. Breland, my Chief Financial Officer, kind of presents some on our budget, you'll see the funding that has been shifted from institutions to the community over the last several years. The last, last year, one of our main focuses was intensive community support services and we focused in on three of those. One is PAC teams, they're programs of assertive community treatment, they're called a PAC team.
Oh, PAC.
P-A-C-T, yes, they're PAC team. And it's a national model, it's monitored to fidelity, it's an evidence-based practice. And the PAC team really wraps services around the individual, they're very intense services so someone can remain in their communities and prevent that hospitalization. Then there's another team called an ICOR team and it's an intensive community outreach and recovery team. Let me back up, actually. I'm just not going to, we won't worry about my slides, we'll just stop. Okay. So, so we have 10 PAC teams in the state. We had, two years ago, we had eight, we've added two more since then and we have 10 now. Pineville operates a PAC team for Harrison County. That is the, that's the most intensive level of community service for an individual to try to prevent them from having to go to the hospital. We also started ICOR teams specifically for more rural areas of the state because a PAC team has to have a certain level of staffing and in rural areas, that can be more difficult. As you know, there's a workforce issue everywhere, but there's a workforce issue in mental health as well. And ICOR teams also treat someone in the community, wrap the services around them to try to keep them out of the hospital. And then we also have intensive community support services and it's very similar, it's not as an intense level as PAC or ICOR, but it is services to keep that person in the community. So, a lot of what has expanded over the last several years has done so to prevent people from having to go to the hospital or to prevent people from having to go back to the hospital. You want to prevent those readmissions. So, that's really the focus is if you're, if you had to go to a state hospital, and in this area, that's South Mississippi State Hospital in purpose, if you have to go when you were discharged, we want to have a warm handoff and a good discharge with the community mental health center in this area of Pineville for that individual to have the services they need to prevent them from having to go back. I think one of the main keys to what, some of the issues that y'all are facing is diversion, is how to prevent that person from entering the court system in the first place. And in order to do that, you need a good, strong, community-based service system. I think another key to that is your mobile crisis response teams. So, those have started up over the last several years. The first one, we began those in 2014 and they're 24/7, they're operated by your local community mental health center. And last year, what we call fiscal year FY20, they had about 36,000 calls across the state. These teams are extremely busy and they had a little over 20,000 face-to-face visits, which means they were not able to deescalate the problem over the phone and they did have to go out and do face-to-face. And then a lot of those are done with law enforcement, in particular, when available, CIT officers as well. So, I think that's kind of the key is the funding we are shifting and we have shifted funding back in, Kelly, I'm still in your thunder. Back in FY19, we shifted 13.3 million from our institutions to the community-based services. And then in FY21, which we just finished, we shifted 4 million from the institutions to the community services. That's what started these 16 ICOR teams. The, the funding shift from FY19 is what enhanced the crisis stabilization units. So, before that, we, we had a limited number in the state, we have 13 crisis stabilization units now, we have 176 beds. So, I think the key is you have to have this balance, you have to have that intense level of care, you really want a continuum of care, you have to have those state hospital beds there and available for the people who need them. And at the same time, you have to build up a community-based system that prevents those hospitalizations. So, as you see those decrease, and we have over the last several years, we've seen the number of people going into our state hospitals decrease. As you see that decrease, you can shift that funding to build that system. But, the Mississippi Legislature realized that's difficult to do at the same time, to try to build up a system and continue to operate the one that you currently have. And they provided funding over the last several years, that is what started mobile crisis response teams, that's what added PAC teams across the state and enhanced some of these services to try to keep people out of the hospital. So, you're exactly right, that is going to be, that on the community level is going to be key in preventing people to stay, to be, to keep people out of the state hospital.
I think one of the problems, issue, it wasn't so much the money because at one time, we probably could have paid for it and that is, we had considered more beds as far as our initial CSU units and we were told you can't have more than 16.
You can't.
And it, you know, I guess somebody unknowledgeable as I was, I couldn't understand why if we were willing at the time to create more beds to handle those folks that John and him were going to be talking about and all that, we're told we can't do it. And at the time, we could have probably paid for it and it just didn't make sense, but it's because of the, that once you exceed so many beds, you become an institution.
That's exactly right, it's called the IMD exclusion and it's part of CMS, so it's federal, it's, it's part of CMS. And what it is, is if you have over 16 beds, you can be considered-
In a particular facility.
In one location, that's right, that's right.
If you knew the facility, you could have 16 or more, but it couldn't be under one roof.
That's right, you can operate two crisis stabilization units separately, but if those beds are under one location, the IMD exclusion applies and what happens is you can't bill Medicaid.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Because I think the most immediate problem we're dealing with is commitments, both the initial process and then if they're committed. So, we have probably 450 a year.
Well, I'll, I'll speak on the numbers, approximately, over 400 RITS are issued. So, Harrison County is witnessing bed placement issues on pre-hearing for the evaluations. Once they have a hearing, then we have led, excuse me, bed placement for the commitments, which I think since February 1st, out of 100 and, let's see, 100 and, let me read this right, only 20, out of, out of 140 that were committed, I'm confused here, hold on one second, out of 196 that met criteria for commitment and treatment, 26 went to the state, through the state hospital, okay? Either purpose or where. So, that's the problem. Some of these commitments are going back to the emergency room where they're being held for pre-hearing. Emergency rooms do not have the psych units, so they're not getting the treatment when they're placed back in the emergency room when there's no beds available. And I don't, I'm not being critical, but when we call purpose, we don't get a call back, we leave a message and then I consulted Pineville and they said, they do the same to us, we have to continue to call all day and somebody will answer the phone. So, and this has put on the clerk of the court for placement, both pre-hearing and commitments.
And if I could, I can add to this because, first off is the RIT. So, what's a problem is you get a RIT and the judge says, okay, this person needs to be evaluated. CSU's full or don't, has no capacity, so they are held into the emergency room until a bed opens up there.
Right.
Some of them have been held for an average of seven to 10 days in the emergency room, not getting treated, not getting evaluated or we've, we've tried to send them to private facilities, that gets out of control financially in a hurry, although we're trying to address that. And so, that's a multi-faceted, immediate problem just in the RIT process.
Right.
Then if they're committed, there you go, the next problem, that is where do they go to? CSU's, it's a crisis stabilization unit. My understanding is not there are treatments for stabilization and the question is going to the state hospital or going to a private facility. We've been talking to some of the private facilities about a contract with them to do it. The sheriff has a problem in that we're talking about his transportation, the ability to handle his everyday transportation for the courts and everything else has to go along with the mental health. So, the sheriff has come up with a potential budget amendment for $400,000 a year to have just the transportation unit, so the county's $400,000 there. We went to one private facility for a while and that bill was by mistake, I'm not going to make them mad, they sent a bill for a half a million dollars. Later that was amended because there was a mistake in the bill, but it was kind of a sticker shot problem. We've had, I mean, it's, it's, the board is not in the mental health business, the board is in a funding business, but it's fallen on the board, this board to try to figure out, and the chancellor clerk to his credit, the majority of the burden has fallen on him to try to deal with this. He's, he's the clerk, the truth matters, all he's supposed to do is take the pleadings. That's not what's happening, he's been called upon to call the places, look around, he's hired a full-time social worker, which again, is a funding issue, to try to deal with that. So, this chancellor clerk has a full-time social worker job, he has to try to deal with mental health. So, while we've been trying to deal with it, the board, we're just not equipped, the board not equipped to do, provide funding. And so, it's, CSU's got, it's, you know, they're limited in what they can do. We've been reduced to 12 beds because of staffing, I understand, they're trying to solve that problem, I think it's getting close, but even 16 beds is probably not enough to handle the 400 something we have and not cost the counties an arm and a leg. It's just a problem, we're trying to figure out how to deal with it. I have drafted a contract and I don't mind telling you, I submitted to them and the hangup is we tried to draft the contract like we have a state statute that says if inmates treated, they can't charge any more than Medicare rates. So, we tried to incorporate that, that is not part of the mental health commitment statute. So, we tried to incorporate that into the contract and the questions came back to me about the Medicare rates. Well, I know, I emailed back to one of the private facilities, I know this much about Medicare, Medicaid rates and that's nothing. So, when they started asking me how is this going to work, I'm like, I got no idea. And so, I thought they knew, so, you know, we don't know, they, they said that $800 a day was the standard Medicare, Medicaid rate, I don't know that, you know? That's where we are on a contract with them, but even if we do a contract with them, it's a funding issue. We don't know how much it's going to be, if you, if it's cost a thousand, I'm just, so I can add quickly, $1,000 a day and the average stays 10 days, 10,000 times 450 people is a lot of, I'm, I'm just running.
This is for treatment.
I'm standing.
It's a smaller number.
I'm just running numbers quickly, that's 440,000 a year, that's a 400,000 for transportation, that's 400,000 for treatment. We're starting to get into some issues that are difficult and, and we're, we're paying for Pineville, this is on top of that, paying our proportion share of Pineville. Our most immediate issue is the RITS and the commitments, once the RITS are, that's where we're having difficulty. I think the rest of the mental health system, everybody's, it seems to be working well. Now, I don't know how the, these teams going out could help reduce the numbers, I haven't seen that yet.
I guess the question I'd ask you, I'd like to ask you based on your knowledge and experience, when you're making this shift from the state and as you say, beds, hospital beds, to a more community service thing, I assume the cost is going to be a lot more, or is it? When we make that shift, the cost is going to be more than what it's normally cost, it will not be?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. I mean, it, 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 there's, there's a lot of different factors at play there. PAC teams cost more to operate than an ICOR team. An ICOR team costs more to operate than what we call ICSS. So, there's different, but at the same time, you have to, you have to have those beds available for those individuals that do need that commitment level and do, so it's a, it's a balancing act on that as well. But now, we've been able to shift, you know, certain dollars and see a large impact statewide with adding those CSU beds, those crisis stabilization beds and adding those teams.
Are those teams, the teams that you're referring to, are, are those teams mostly consist of professional people with certain degrees of experience?
Masters level, that's right.
Which costs a lot of money.
Exactly, exactly right. Nurse practitioner, psychiatric nurse practitioner, you have licensed mental health therapist, masters-level mental health therapist, crisis support professionals, RNs, it's a variety on the different teams.
Do those people exist? Do enough of them exist to, to take up that slack that's going to become?
No, sir, we need, we need more staff.
And that's what happened too, I think, Pineville, we, we had the beds, but we didn't have the people. And that, that created some of the problems that we have in the deal.
It is, and that's statewide, that's na, that's actually nation.
A national, right.
I mean, that's a national problem.
They're getting too many benefits, nobody wants to work.
That's a national problem.
Yeah.
On, on some of your areas that y'all are, are dealing with at the moment, I think there's a few key pieces that we can try to put in place to help with that. One, I know that Pineville just this spring began serving Harrison County and, and that was additional clients to take on and they had to open up cases on them and, and get their services on the ground and in this community, which takes some time. So, I, I feel like this time next year, which I know that's a long way away, but this time next year, when they've had a chance to really get their feet on the ground, to get their staff on the ground, that it's going, you're going to be in a completely different situation, I do. But, at the same time, with your immediate issue, one thing that can be done, and I think, Mona, correct me if I'm wrong, y'all have already kind of started this process, is having someone that is talking to these individuals before the RIT is filed, when they come to the courthouse, having some mental health professional to talk to them to try to divert the individual, to see, okay, you're in this situation, maybe a PAC team will help you at this time, to try to work through what services could be added for that individual then to help prevent that problem. Again, a lot of this goes back to diversion, trying to, to, to keep individuals out of the court and keep individuals out of the state hospital and that's where those on-the-ground key community services are. So, I think if you have someone that can, can speak directly to that person or that family and say, here's what's available, let's see what we can work through. In addition to that, you mentioned in the IMD exclusion and you can't have more than 16 beds. So, we have informed Region 12, and I know, I think all of you are aware as well, that we can provide a grant to them and we can see what would best suit the needs for this county. Would that be a diversion center, which is more of a, in the mental health field, what we call a living room model? And it's usually about a 23-hour stay, the person's assessed, they get an assessment, they get connection with services while they're there, but it's a place for law enforcement to take an individual that's non-felony, non-violent. Across the nation, you've seen good success with this with diverting high number of people from having to enter into the court system or from ending up in jail or ending up at a state hospital. We have a very small grant right now, it's $150,000 that we're doing with Communicare in, which is Region 2 Community Mental Health Center. They've just now got theirs off the ground, it's much smaller than what we're proposing for here. But, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, they had 20, 24 in the last month that they diverted and all but two kept their first follow-up appointment to the Community Mental Health Center. That's, that's great progress, especially for something that is just now getting off the ground. So, I think a diversion center could absolutely have benefits here. At the same time, we could look at a crisis stabilization unit, another 12 or 16-bed crisis stabilization unit for the county. So, Mona and I have had some discussions about that and I know we'll have other people at the table as well, but we have that grant funding that we can provide to address that need for those individuals who are waiting or who need to be assessed or who need services. South Mississippi State Hospital, I'm glad you told me about the phone calls and I will absolutely check into that. They right now have 48 beds, they're a 50-bed facility, but because of COVID and isolation- They're a 50-bed facility, but because of COVID and isolation, they have 48 beds at the moment. When I checked with our director yesterday, we have six people waiting for a bed at South Mississippi State Hospital at the moment. And one of those is in a crisis stabilization unit, one is at Memorial, and four individuals are at Oceans. So it goes back to what, what you were saying. Having those beds available, but while at the same time, looking at a crisis stabilization unit or a diversion center, and then also looking at how can we beforehand, before it gets to that point, make sure people are connected to the services that they need? That is absolutely key. And that's what, like I said, this last funding cycle, last fiscal year, we started adding these ICORT teams, these additional intensive community support specialists, which takes a little time to get these teams up and operational. They're being monitored to fidelity, they have to have certain staffing, and then also they have to have training to get them prepared. So it takes a little time to get all of the teams set up and on the ground and going. But I think you've got to have all of those pieces in play for a strong system. You need that crisis stabilization, you need that mobile crisis to prevent that, then you also need those state hospital beds when they're necessary. And then you need those intense services in the community to prevent it.
Can I ask you two, two questions? You said we should have somebody, so we say the board should hire somebody.
No, we can provide, we can provide grant funding to Region 12, but I think they're already starting.
So you have those, they get a call from some family member that wants to file an affidavit? We send them to CSU for?
Well, you know, I think the statute says they come and file an affidavit. So I think the court, not the clerk, the court could, with the judge, and Pine Belt could get in law and the judge, instead of issuing a writ to take custody, somehow get the team to visit this individual through the court. Am I correct, Mona on that?
We can certainly try. We were, we were meeting with the affiant ahead of time and actually, we did like 216 of those from February to the end of June. And diverted all but 93 to our, from that state, to our CSU. Couple of Fridays ago, we were notified we can no longer do that by the AG's office because of a letter they got sent, and so we've had to go back to the stat, the statute that says anybody that goes for involuntary commitment has to have a writ first. Then they, the sheriff's supposed to transport to us for the pre-eval, and then if it goes from there, it's the two docs. But one of the other things that I would like, and perhaps Representative Belcher.
Mona and I talked, we're, we try to communicate through the court, through my office. But, you know, I've, I have found that this uniform civil commitment guide now has been issued by the state, okay? And step two, I think that I have, I don't understand, is if that's filed statute, or is that a recommendation guide? Number two, it says the sheriff will take to a community mental health center. Now, with the writ, and the court would order that person, that patient, order the sheriff to take them to, and Mona has stated that that would be Broad Avenue, that he would take that person there, and there would be a pre-assessment. So is that statute?
That's statute.
So statute now says the sheriff takes them to get pre-assessed?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, this, this was actually what was developed by the attorney, the attorney general's office with that task force that they have.
The statute, and that's, that, that part of the statute has not changed. That, that has been in statute for a while.
To take them to a community health center?
Yes, sir, if you'll let me, I have it right here, it's a second, I can read it.
The law, the statute of the law needs to be updated to meet the departments that we're trying to.
And I, I think that's one reason that, that the AG's office and the task force worked on this, was because, you know, not everyone is aware exactly of what the statute is.
Can I, can I, unfortunately read them more than I want to read, but, but I want to go back to what we're talking about, because I don't see anything contrary to the statute. I'm curious to what she talked about, they said that, where somebody comes in and says, we want to file an affidavit, my son is going crazy and tearing up the house, and John were to say, okay, before you file your affidavit, you need to go talk?
No, no, I don't think that's it now. It's a writ.
I'm standing up, earlier we had a proposal that we would hire somebody that would try to divert them to one of these things.
That's, that's, that's actually all in this guide, and that is on, on kind of a, I mean, it's a national recommendation, it's something that's being encouraged a lot in other states too. And the way that it says on the guide is it says, "Before filing an affidavit for commitment," so it's before the filing of the affidavit, "to a behavioral health program with the chancery clerk's office, we strongly encourage you to contact your local community mental health center to learn about services, supports, and alternatives to the commitment process." So it's really that family comes in, they want to, and you say, let's connect you with the community mental health center.
We did that, just like she said, and I had the senior judge, along with another party involved in this, ask for an AG's opinion, because they thought that the affiant shouldn't be sent, the affiant shouldn't be pre-screened. The statute says the patient is to be pre-evaluated, so anyway.
And that is true, and you can't require it. You can't require it, but you could, you can encourage it, and that's why, that's right.
And I can work with the court on that, if we want to go back to that, we, I can work with the court.
So, so that's the AG's opinion you're talking about? And if the AG's office says that you can't suggest to somebody, wait, before you file the affidavit, you need to go meet with these folks and be evaluated? I hate to say this to them, and I've said it before, you're just wrong, and that's not true.
And can I, can I clarify those two? What, what the letter to them said was that we were insisting on only doing that, and so we had to follow statute. And so that's where that got changed. But let me also say that we've been talking with Representative Belcher as well of, you're right, some of the statute needs to change, because I can't imagine if you have someone who is so in need of the involuntary commitment, that, that affiant, that person is not someone that's a part of that process. So we, we can do that, we were just told, no, follow the statute.
Well, if an affidavit is filed, I got, that's the question then, once the affidavit is filed, it has to follow.
Well, one of the things that we tried to do when we first came here.
If you can't shortcut that process because the law doesn't allow you to do it, then we need to try to get the law. The statute changed to accommodate the process that we're trying to do that will expedite and, and maybe relieve some of the pressure on the actual beds.
It sounds like there might have been no, a little misunderstanding with, with what Mona was doing and maybe what the attorney general's office, because it wasn't all fair, right?
Before they took over February 1st, reached out to the board president, we all had a meeting, and it was established that we would direct also on their website, something to do with information that they would go to Broad Avenue, the affiant, so they can determine, help determine for the court, what kind of needs this person may need through the, through the affiant. So anyway, that's how it all came about. We did that, we put it in place, our office was directing them there. I seem to think it was working okay. Now, is it public service by sending somebody away and pointing them to another direction? Sometimes you could say you've given them the runaround, but we try to explain to them that this will hopefully fit the needs and address the needs of their family member or whoever.
The, the hard part about it is the chancellor clerk's office is receiving pleadings that are being filed, and that is their job. The danger here is that when this person walks into John's office, says, my son is tearing up my house, he needs to be committed, and that clerk is gonna say to a person that they got no training to be able to say to, although he has one now, wait a minute, you need to go to the crisis stabilization unit first.
No, Broad Avenue.
I mean, or Broad Avenue, where, and, and try that route first. They're making a judgment that, that to me is not, they're not qualified to make. That's where this gets difficult.
Right.
And, and John's office, in, in his defense, is being called upon to do this judgment all the time. It's really gotten to be a, he hired a social worker because he felt uncomfortable with his clerks who are not social workers and have no mental health training, except they have years and years of experience with dealing with it unfortunately. So that's a difficult thing that, that, I don't know how we saw it, if we.
And I totally agree with you, and I think that's what every other county in the state has had to do for years as part of the statute, so this is very different. When we came in, we introduced a whole very different kind of process, but it was statute that we went back to. So, yeah, again, and so we can, and the unfortunate part about the statute now, or the reason we really wanted to do the assessments with the affiant first, is that we don't want everybody to have to go and get a writ, because it's really traumatic on them, but it is also burdening to the system and the sheriff's office and all of us as well, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Wendy, can Cindy follow up on that, pursue your number two on the guides, like if it's statutory?
Yes, sir. It says, it's in 412167. It says, whenever an affidavit is filed with the chancery clerk, the clerk, upon discretion of the chancellor of the court, shall issue a writ directed to the sheriff of the proper county to take into custody the person alleged to be in need of treatment and take the person for pre-evaluation screening and treatment by the appropriate community mental health center. That is what the law said, and that, that hasn't changed in the 10 years I've been at mental health.
Right, it sure hasn't, but the community health, mental health center we had was at CSU, not Broad Avenue. So it's a logistics thing now. If you're saying that this Broad Avenue is part of the statute to take them there, not a CSU, that's where we used to take them. We gotta go back to how it was done in the past, and we're living off that statute. We did it the same, like the statute says, but now, we're, we're being told, no offense to Pine Belt, that they have seven professionals there for pre-assessment. Am I correct on that moment? Can you tell me, seven staff members that could evaluate or?
We have, I don't remember that, but we certainly have more masters people at the back, Broad Avenue, that can handle them. See, and I think the two entities are getting combined, they're all a part of the community mental health center. The CSU is if you're gonna place them there, the Broad Avenue is that initial, initial, they can come here, we can do an assessment, and we can go.
I get it now, but you have to understand for 25 years, clerk, they went, CSU where it's at now. And I understand change. So yesterday with the sheriff's budget amendment, he didn't know that was a duty of him to take them and have two deputies there while these individuals are being assessed. So that budget, huh?
I don't know, I don't know about two deputies and all that.
Let me, let me, let me finish real quick.
You're messing up the process.
No, I'm not messing up the process because, okay?
Listen to me finish the second. Because the first step that we're talking about at Broad Avenue, as I understand, is not the writ.
Yes, it is.
No.
I've thought that before.
Because I understand what we're trying to, at this point in time, which is something new, which maybe reduce the number of writs, is that when somebody comes in to sign an affidavit, they're gonna be referred to Broad Avenue, that this is the affiant, not the patient. That affiant's gonna go talk to Broad Avenue and say, I've got this son that's tearing up my house, whatever, going on, and y'all are gonna make some kind of evaluation on how to treat that, but we're not talking about the sheriff transporting anybody that, we're talking about your team going out or somebody going out and trying to meet with this person, to decide if they need a writ or need an affidavit.
Yes, sir, what we're talking about is like an initial, the confusion is, the statute refers to a pre-evaluation screening, that's to be done on the patient. We're talking about a new screening that we're gonna create, or that Region 12's already been doing over all these years, but, but it's not a pre-evaluation screening on a patient, it's just a meeting with the affiant. And I'll say this, in DeSoto County, this is how they do it up there. DeSoto County does this. They send their people to an attorney who handles all their commitments, they do this, through their community mental health center, they, they do a meeting with the affiant to get a lot of background information, and then they try to divert, as Mona said, and successfully so, so that it never even gets to this point where an affidavit's filed and a writ has to be issued. And that's what I think we're trying to see, how can we get that accomplished through legislation?
So are you saying once you, you send these folks, before you go through any writs to the court too, to this initial Broad Avenue person, that person can evaluate it and determine whether they go to one of your groups that you were talking about that you created?
Yes, at that point, actually, they can look at.
So you bypass, in effect, you're bypassing any artist from the court.
Right.
You're sending them, to them first initially, they evaluate, and they say, I got the people that you need to talk to.
They're diverting them.
To defer them to the, those, I'm sorry, I can't remember those groups, but those group, a specific group that can, they feel can, can help them, before they, any court, any writs, anything issued.
Well, now, let's be clear, this is not mandatory.
This is not, that's right.
If the person insists on filing an affidavit or writ, they go.
You cannot require them to do that.
This particular process doesn't require him to call the sheriff and take them over there to that, that person. The sheriff is not involved in this process.
Not in the process of, let's go talk to the community mental health center and see what services are available. That's not in that part of the process, no. And that's not in statute at all. You cannot require, you know, Mary to not file that, that affidavit and say, Mary, you must go to Pine.
If that person tells the clerk, uh-uh, I don't go out there, I want this thing going through the judge where he can issue a writ to get him somewhere or her somewhere to appropriate service.
That's right, but DeSoto does it that way, and Pine Belt has done it that way also in some other counties successfully.
Yes, up until two Fridays ago, when we got our call from the attorney general's office, we did it that way for this county and successfully diverted many people. I think the issue now is we can continue to do that, we just can't get paid for doing that. And so we're also looking at our resources and how are we able to handle them, because we did three to five people per day, which is a full-time person that leaves, so at Broad Avenue.
Could you explain why can't you get paid?
Okay, so there it, and jump in, Wendy.
You can't bill Medicaid.
You can't, you can't bill Medicaid for that, but you also, you can't, there's a small grant that the state has that helps mental health centers to do these assessments. It's kind of a first, kind of a pre-evaluation.
Pre-evaluations.
But it has to be with the respondent. So the ones we do with the affiant, and this was on us, we just learned this, you can, we can do all day long, but we cannot get that reimbursed by this grant.
Has to be in front of your phone, with your phone.
With the person, and we were doing.
You can't charge the person basically, is what you're saying.
Or on the same one there to have.
Once you've sent them, you're not sending them out there, you can't give them a bill.
The grant that we provide them for pre-evaluation screening is the pre-evaluation screening that's done on the person.
On the person, and we were doing those as well. We were just doing the affiant first to divert. Now, we've been talking with Wendy and them about how can we, or can, is there a little bit of grant money of there so that we could continue doing that to, because there is such data of diversion that works there? I mean, we also have our, we have our intensive community support services, we have a NMSR team, we have a PAC team, that's actually operated in this county for five, six years. And so we have those things in place with a few vacancies. We still have 12 vacancies in our whole Harrison County. So we've got those in place. But the affiant coming in, again, is just essential to being able to get accurate information. And right now with, or always with the statute, the affiant would go to chancery, and there's just a little form that they say, this is why I want someone, and you're absolutely right, Mr. McAdams, it's that person that's at the clerk's office that has to make that judgment call of, do we do a writ, do we continue? So I totally get that we want as much information as possible, and then they go.
My office doesn't make that decision, we present.
You present it to the judge.
To the judge, and the judge makes the determination.
Correct, correct.
See, but, and I need to interrupt, but again, what's frightening to me is that you've had a chancery clerk, no offense, or not mental health, and judges, not mental health professionals, making these massive decisions. So when Cindy read statute 412167, or, and we have our senator here and our representative, are there changes within the statute that don't just mention, they say, chancery clerk to the chancellor, which is the judge, to the sheriff? Where is the mental health? You went back to diversion, you had three good points. The first one was mental health profession. The first one was, mental health professional before the commitment. Would that mental health professional be a psychiatrist, which is important, they're an M.D. or an N.P. to be able to write prescriptions, right? Because some truly just need their medication. Our friend that works for AMR called and said she can't even get her sense of medication, and he's schizophrenic. Luckily, she's a strong woman and can handle him. This is, and I have a friend who has a friend, Byron Johnson, he was in the news a few months ago. He went to CSU, he was released, he went back, he was released, he killed his newborn, he killed his, the mother of the newborn, and then he killed himself. It was in the news in February. And my friend, who is his dear friend, said, what the F is going on? And so that's kind of, this is a really big deal, that we've had non-mental health professionals making these massive decisions. I'll get off my soapbox, but Scott, I mean, chime in. Do you know what I mean? I mean, the statute is not working.
Yeah, absolutely, but, but I'm still trying to understand a couple of things, and I'm, I'm like surprising Marlon, Marlon Linder here. I'm just trying to understand where the intake is supposed to occur. And we're talking about things that y'all deal with every single day, but from, if we were, if we were just starting this out anew, the reality of it is, is that we wouldn't want a concerned party to come to you first. We want them to contact the community mental health center. Because, you know, we're using terminology here and talking about writs, but we're, we're trying to do, to, to prevent a writ from being issued. So we're not dealing with affiants and, or respondents until they come here, until they come here. What we're really trying to do is take a concerned party to, to discuss a patient that they have.
Can I tell you one change that started us into this kind of tizzy? And it's not anybody's fault, it's just the way the system was working. Truth of the matter is, before Pine Belt took over, Camp, Harrison County, Gulf Coast Mental Health was running. John had a clerk at Crisis Stabilization Unit, a clerk there, twenty-four-seven, right, John? That clerk was at the mental, and somebody would go, instead of coming to the clerk's office, they went to Crisis Stabilization where they had psychologists, they had social workers, they had other people. And, and so all the paperwork was completed there, and, and you had people there to make some evaluation, not just a clerk, is my point. When Pine Belt, and I, look, this is not blaming Pine Belt, because I understood their concern, and I'm not complaining, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. When Pine Belt came on, they felt like that was a conflict of interest to have somebody at Pine Belt who is making a determination whether or not a writ should be filed or not, and making the determination that they need treatment. So it was kind of a conflict of interest situation, so they didn't like that having there. But what it did was, it removed that person at CSU making the decision, and put it at the clerk's office where there's nobody there that has any.
Well, again, they weren't making decisions, they would take the affidavit, only for that purpose. But look, I'm not saying that's gonna work. And I hate to leave all this, but let's go back to what, what they said they diverted patients that were able to intercept from them coming to chancery. But they still came in numbers. We still had bed placement issues in numbers for pre-hearing. We still had, so my point is, yes, they may have diverted some, some patients through the affiant, but in the large number, still came to the court, still sought an affidavit. An affidavit was, a writ was issued, and then it was on the clerk's part to find pre-hearing placement. That was difficult. Judge orders to emergency rooms when they're full for pre-hearing. Once they're committed, then it's the clerk's decision, or it's on the clerk again when CSU is full, to find a bed.
Mr. McAdams, when y'all were operating the CSU, when you had deputized CSU staff to take the affidavits, because we all know the CSU was only sixteen beds, no more than that.
Right.
So in Harrison County, a large, largely populated county, what y'all do when the CSU was full, when, when there were sixteen beds in that CSU, where'd y'all send those other people?
That is a good question. I've, I've talked to the former director, Jeff Ben, he, he operated it as a single point of entry, but with the sixteen beds, I think he reached out to Oceans and to GBH, and that's prior to Memorial selling to GBH. So Memorial owned it. So it was a different story, it was a different setup. I'm not saying we need to go back to that.
I'm just curious where, because I, you know, obviously y'all are a large populated county, and I'm just imagining sixteen beds quite two years ago probably wasn't enough. I know other counties that you love.
It started off with thirty, but then the regulations came.
A lot of them at the time, because Memorial had more behavioral health.
Right.
If they were at Memorial and they were full, then we'd just taken them all.
Right.
Sheriff Pearson, I think that's key there. I think you had a decrease in the beds.
We lost that.
We lost that. So we just, that's why the ERs are filling up like the old times.
The staff that were deputized were paid by Gulf Coast Mental Health. They were employees there. They were, correct. So that, that's really the conflict of interest thing. But what I was told is that.
They were paid through, I'm sorry, they were paid to support CSU through the board, that was a separate part of the budget, to Gulf Coast Mental Health, to pay for that staff, if that makes sense. It wasn't, yeah. So anyway, I, I don't wanna go back to that. I really don't like Pine Belt.
Let me answer your question, please.
We leave that.
What we were told is that they mostly sent, they ferreted through the people that were there, and if people had insurance or Medicaid, they would send them to these other places, because they could bill for it, and that way there was no real conflict.
Right.
That's how they were doing. And so I, I don't understand how they're not getting paid now, when they were able to get paid then.
Before.
So, and that's just my ignorance in terms of how insurance.
Well, that was my question. They, they obviously had to be going somewhere.
Yeah.
If the sixteen beds are full now, I'm sure they were full two, three, five years ago, so where did those, where did the overflow go once the sixteen beds were full?
Well, and I think you have the perfect storm too, of the beds, DOJ lawsuit, beds at the hospital.
And it's been rising from a city down here on the coast.
If I can, if I can, this is way off the rails, just with all deference. We need some focus, and we have problems, and they do need to be laser focused. I brought Director Bailey in here, so she could answer questions for sure, but let's keep it focused, and, and I know, I know it's a board of supervisors shit, but with all deference.
You're okay.
Let, let her explain what she can do to help. If that doesn't satisfy the problem, she can go further, we can work as a team. But all this crossfire is not accomplishing anything. I think we need to let her talk, say what you need to say. Like your CFO supervisor powers had questions about the six-hundred-million-dollar budget, that's another reason that I asked you to come. We're not getting there, because we're, we're going off course. If we could please stay on course, you know, let, let Director Bailey talk, let her CFO talk. After that, fire away. Ask your questions, but for God's sakes, let her talk. Let the CFO talk, then we can ask questions. We're not accomplishing anything right now.
She told us to interrupt her anytime, so we.
Well, not literally. I think she told us.
They were being furious.
Yeah, well, I'm just asking you, let her finish and let the CFO.
You were on number two of your diversion plan, I'll get you back on that.
Okay. I take your notes, you were number two. You were having to take me back to what number one was.
So, mental health professional before we talk about commitment and the grant for one bed.
And that leads into one of the problems, that's right. So, so Pine Belt and I have had several conversations about that route of being able to divert and having an individual who can talk to that family, or that individual who's coming in concerned, and, and talk to them about what services are available to try to prevent that going down the route of filing that affidavit. So that's one thing that we're looking at, is already working on, is being done in a few counties, and it's been successful from what I've heard, so I think that is something that we will absolutely support and we can do. Then we have the funding that we were going to provide Region Twelve, which can be utilized for a diversion center, our Crisis Stabilization Unit. I think we can have some more conversations about that. Right now we have one-point-two million. The, a sixteen-bed Crisis Stabilization Unit, a twelve-bed Crisis Stabilization Unit, are, like I said, that living room diversion model, that is, that's also very helpful. So we can look at those possibilities of, of what we wanna do. And then I think another key, and this is something that Region Twelve and I've had conversations about, is right now the Gulfport Crisis Stabilization Unit sometimes cannot take certain individuals because they may be violent, or just the, the condition, the situation that they're in. So we were going to provide a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to Pine Belt, to where they can hire some CIT, hopefully CIT-trained officers to enhance their. CIT is Crisis Intervention Training. So Harrison County has a CIT team, a Crisis Intervention Team, and those law enforcement officers have gone through very specific, it's a forty-hour course, on how to de-escalate an individual who has a serious mental illness. Wonderful asset, all very blessed to have that in Harrison County. But what we wanna try to do is provide, or give grant funding to Pine Belt, to where they can hire some CIT officers to increase the security that they have at the Gulfport Crisis Stabilization Unit, to be able to take some more of those individuals.
I ask you a question, and that's a good point you just brought up, because it, because it happens all the time when we, when we're there. But, and I've been through all the CIT training, so I, I know about all that, but when you, Crisis Stabilization Unit is, to me, is the place where, not a violent offender, not somebody violent, but somebody, we had one last week that wouldn't get out of the car, and they said, we're not gonna take him because he won't, he won't physically get out of the car. Where else do you take them? I mean, that's, so you got two officers sitting there going, they won't get out of the car, okay, what do we do at this point? That, to me, that's what CSU is for. You, if they won't get out of the car, you take them out of the car. You get them inside, they stabilize them inside. It's a Crisis Stabilization Unit. So that's, that's kind of very confusing to me.
I do, I understand that. I mean, you've got, you've got a variety of different situations that can happen, and every one of them can be different. I think if we had CIT officers at the Crisis Stabilization Unit, that that could absolutely be beneficial.
Number the, the officers that would be there would obviously have to be trained in CIT.
That's right, that's the, that's the.
They would, it would be a situation like it was years ago. I can't tell you how many times as a patrolman, young patrolman, I had to go out there and manhandle somebody that was, that was giving them problems at CSU. So it would be, it'd be officers that would be paid by, paid by.
We would give a grant to Pine Belt, and they would be employed through Pine Belt.
So they would, they would be your enforcement to do that.
Yeah, they would be employees, we do this at Westway, they would be employees at Pine Belt Mental Health. We do all the CIT training, so whether they're with the sheriff's department or wherever, maybe it's someone who wants to do off-duty work or whatever to do, we do that at Westway, and it has really decreased the level of aggression there just by their presence. So that's why we've been talking about being able to do that at CSU here. But they would be Pine Belt employees, and you guys would not have to worry about them, they would be part of us.
Let me also say this, though, we still fall under the problem of, if we have someone that is out of control, we are unable to restrain those individuals. We do not have restraint capabilities, whether that is through chemical or physical, we are unable, based on statute, to restrain those individuals. So I think that needs to be said out loud.
Well, that's a great, and again, I can caveat into something else. I think we all agree that that person that you're talking about, or I know I can, that person that you're talking about does not need to be in jail. Do we agree on that, or we don't agree on that?
It depends.
It's absolutely zero to me. That person that has those issues, if you're having a person that, that has violent tendencies and won't get out of the car, and y'all won't accept them at CSU, why in the world would anybody think a six-by-six cell is gonna solve the issue? It's not. It's gonna, it's, it's escalate to where, not only are my guys putting hands on them twenty-four-seven, but they're gonna wind up locked in a chair, and we're gonna wind up being sued over it. So to me, jail is not the answer for anybody with mental health issues. I can bring you out there right now and show you three of them that have been there for years, that are waiting for a state bed, that I spend a thousand dollars a month replacing doors and locks and everything, and they tear it inside themselves. Mental health, jail is not for a mental health person.
But if they are high on meth, or they are uncontrollable because of drug use at the time.
That's when you, that's when you medicate them. You medicate them, and you get them, you get them into a routine to where you can actually talk to them and do something with them.
We cannot medicate anyone until after they have been involuntarily committed and have that court date. And so in that timeframe, if it takes eight or ten days to have that court date, that person cannot be medicated. And when you talk about treatment, as soon as they get involuntarily committed, unless they consent earlier, we start treatment. It's not just a holding pen for people, as has been said before. So if we could get them committed before, when we've got them, so we can start treatment, we can handle those quicker as well.
Wendy, let me ask you one more, and I don't wanna make Kevin mad, but it's just kinda, kinda, it's just kinda going together. So, and let me give you an example first. A person that is sentenced to a crime, when, they, they are held in our jail, so we maintain them in our jail. You have Gulfport Police Department arrest them, they are held over in, in our jail, and they are Gulfport prisoner until they are bound over to a grand jury, not indicted, bound over. So at that point in time, they become a county inmate. So the county starts paying for that inmate. This is something, I don't know if y'all know this, but this is a lot of money. So, so they're bound over to a grand jury. It, it could take three weeks for them to get bound over. So three weeks to a year and a half until they go to trial, they're a county inmate. When they get sentenced, thirty days after sentencing, they become a state inmate. So we don't call MDOC until after they're sentenced. After they're sentenced, MDOC knows they're sentenced, they send us a list, we send them a list and say, here's your inmates can pick up, they can pick them up. Any day after that thirty days, they are a state inmate. So the billing, I build a state for that inmate. Okay, let's go back to mental health, and I'm just giving y'all as, as an example. Go back to mental health. If a person goes to the pre-screening, to the pre-evaluation, goes to the commitment process, and there is no bed, and that person's being held in an ER, who's responsible to pay the ER their, their money for this patient? Because he is now deemed a mental health patient for the state. He's now deemed a state, a state mental health patient. I guess that's how you'd say it. But who's, who's responsible to pay the ER?
Well, this is slightly different, Cindy, than, than I think the typical one that we've talked about before, which is the individual who's waiting.
You said you had six waiting, is why I'm asking this question.
But, that's right. But while they are in a holding, waiting on that state hospital bed, according to statute, it's the county's responsibility.
Right. So it's the county's responsibility to pay, just making sure you understand that, if the person's sitting in Memorial or Garden Park or, or wherever, and they're sitting there waiting on a bed, it's your responsibility, it's the county, to pay the hospital that money per day for that person to sit there.
That's right.
But sometimes it's county hospital as well, but, I mean, you know, as a county, but it is, the statute states that it's the county's responsibility while that individual is holding, waiting on that bed. That is correct.
Not only that.
Kevin, I'm done.
Not only that, for pre-hearing also.
Correct.
Because a writ has been issued by a chancellor in the county. That patient is a resident of the county. So if CSU, God bless them, or Pine Belt, doesn't have a bed for pre-hearing, which they've helped in the past, they take them when they have a bed, then it's an emergency room, we have three of them, they're going to. Then, we talked about hearings, and Mona, I understand her philosophy of getting hearings sooner for commitment, but I think, once you speed up the commitment process, you still don't have placement to get treatment if they're full. Mona, if y'all are full, they gotta, if they had a hearing three days after their, the writ's issued and picked up, and you're full, you still can't treat them. They're gonna go back to an emergency room or wherever.
But we can take them for about medication. And get them to one of our other outpatient programs like PAC team, AdAPT.
They could start medication, so you can start meds.
But I mean, if they're placed for commitment, a judge orders for commitment, for treatment, right? So what you're saying is the judge should change the language, not to a state facility, to an outpatient?
No, no, no. It's while they're still waiting to get into that inpatient facility, but, but if they have, if, if they, if you have the order, Mona can begin medication.
At the emergency room.
Yes.
At CSU.
Yes.
But you're full.
You're making my head hurt.
I know. Mine hurts. It does it to me, too. Well, seriously, we, you're not placed there, you're not placed there because of pre-hearing, because you're full. And you're, you have three counties to service, Hancock and Stone, you're full. Okay, we have a hearing. They're committed. You're still full. We can't send them. They have to go back to their emergency room. They can't get treatment there.
And, okay, I don't know why they can't get treatment there, but at ours, for the people we've got, we can start them sooner on beds, so they get out sooner, so we get more people.
Sure, I know that. I know that. Y'all deliver that service.
They can start them on beds at the hospital as well.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't, let's digress. You also mentioned beds. Number three was $400,000 grant money for CIT, for Crisis Intervention Team, but also a grant for 16 beds in a living-room diversion model.
Yes.
Let's look forward. What are the solutions to that, as I say?
That's right. So, we've got, like I said, y'all, let me say this, we can be here all day, and we can talk all day. It, I, I promise. But it, I know, but I will tell you, it is a puzzle, and you find the pieces, and you have to try to put this puzzle together. And it's not a quick, instantaneous thing, and it's going to take everybody in this room, the legislators, my team, Pine Belt, and all of you to work together to do this. And we are committed to that. I promise you, we are committed to that, and I know Pine Belt is as well. So, when you look at these pieces of the puzzle, which I know I'm not offering on a silver platter here, we're fixing everything, but I do think there's some key pieces that we have right now. We can do either a Crisis Stabilization or Diversion Center, look at that model with that grant of 1.2 million. We can look at having someone that the family, the person coming in, can go and talk to to learn about services. We can try that and see, because we've seen that successful in other counties as well, and some Pine Belt provides services to. And then, as we are building up these services in the community, that just over the last several years, we've started doing these I-Court teams, and PAC teams have been around longer than that. But these I-Court teams and intensive community support services, as we are increasing and adding to those, to get those services around that individual, so hopefully they don't end up in your court. And when you look at number of commitments by county, we've seen decreasing in Harrison County, going back to like FY16, FY17. Now, that's commitments that end up at our state hospital.
Oh, okay.
That's it. I know, I was going to say, let me clarify that. That's commitments that end up at our state hospital. We are starting to, we've seen those go down. But I think then your other, and then the last piece, I actually flipped one of my pieces. The last piece would be that grant funding for that CSU that's in Gulfport for some CIT officers as well. Those are some things that we can start working on now. And then, I know that after talking to Mona, there's other pieces that she's working on as well. So, I mean, I, we are committed to being at the table, we want to be part of the solution. I think we have some things that we can offer and look at and see if it can, it can work.
So, can I ask, who's in charge of, it sounds like we need another CSU board to talk about where, who's in charge of putting that motion? We don't have the board.
Was she saying a $1.2 million family?
It's a grant that we're going to provide to Pine Belt, and I know they're researching and looking right now, too, at the diversion model and the crisis stabilization.
Yeah, we, this was the task group that John alluded to a little earlier, is kind of where that started. We've gotten some data from, from everybody to look at making a proposal to the community, diversion center, living model, CSU, or a hybrid of those. The, the addition to that information is, yes, they've got 1.2 million, but it takes more than 1.2 million to operate it, and you need a facility, and you need the medical component to rule out medical issues also. So, it's still lots of pieces to that puzzle. But yeah, that's, the idea was that we, we do this proposal, we get it to the people who are on that committee or who are representatives, and the community decides, do we want this diversion center that's for the lesser violent, milder charges?
About a 23-hour stay, community assessment there.
Yes. Do you try to find a place where you just do another CSU, like the one we have now? And I will tell you, the funding on grants for that is, you still need a building, it doesn't cover it all, so you still have conversations there, but you're limited to your 16 beds there because of same reasons we have 16 beds now. Or you could try to do a hybrid of them with a few less beds, but that living-room model where you divert them, you, you do these assessments within the first 24 hours, and then move them on to where they need to go after that. That probably hits at least 75, 80% of the people. The group that I think we continue to have the bigger issues with are these groups that are either on the violent extreme, or they have not been connected in with the outpatient part of these other programs. We do have them running with community mental health, so they're continuing to cycle through this involuntary commitment process. In 2020, according to John's data, 136 people had at least two, up to 19 involuntary commitments through their lifespan. So, what that tells me, and they give us the names, so one of the projects we're working on is identifying those names that are in our system, trying to make sure those are a priority into these, these programs that we've got, so that we can start whittling away at that. I think one of the, one of the shockers of the, of the community has been the involuntary commitment state hospital beds have been the go-to for so long, and that's been the end game. And that's, that's just changed.
Right, right.
So, we're getting these, we have a lot of these other things in place already for both adults and kids. We're just needing to expand. Now, I will tell you, too, one of the other things is, and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we're back up to 16, you know? Sweet baby Jesus, please help us on that, we will be. But the other thing is, you get a CSU, you still have to have two or three nurse practitioners, seven or eight RNs, 16 or more CAs, and all that kind of stuff. So, it takes a little while to get it up and going. And you want to make sure you're not right back where you're at now of, we just need placement. We want to tackle this to keep that cycle from continuing.
That's right. Which goes back into it, several different things moving at one time.
Kevin, may I ask you? Are they, if, if, if my understanding is that if we would need a CSU bed, Harrison County, and that we don't have it here at this particular locale, it's full, can we send them to you, and you send those folks to other CSU units in the state?
We can help you, and we do this every morning, send the email out saying, "Here are the other units, here's their number, here are the openings they have." But that, it's by statute, it's Chancy's role and Sheriff transporting to other places.
That's what I'm getting to. This board has committed to creating a transportation unit for the sheriff to transport those folks if need to be to another CS unit somewhere else in the state.
Yes, but there's a vacancy at another Crisis Stabilization Unit.
So, to handle, right now, the problems that we're having right now, we don't have some of this in place, thankfully y'all working on that, and I think that, that's going to be very helpful. But right now, tomorrow, he, he, CSU's full in Harrison County, he has a problem, we have to send that person, and you need to, we need to, we need a CSU bed. You can send that person to wherever an available bed is in the state.
Mona can look and tell you where the beds are.
Because we just, we're committing to $300,000, $400,000 to create a unit to transport those people. And if, if we don't have access to the vacant beds throughout the state, why do we need to spend the money for the sheriff to have to transport?
And you do, and Mona can look and see where the vacancies are at other Crisis Stabilization Units.
That's what I mean.
And she can. But at the same time, according to statute, and I know I keep going back to this, but according to statute, it's the county's responsibility and the sheriff to transport, which is what you're sounding like, y'all speaking out of solution, to transport that individual to Westway.
Wendy, let me, let me follow up on that, and I've visited with Mona and the rest of the staff with Pine Belt. You know, a clerk is not in the bed placement business. And when we call these, we get a list every morning, here's the phone numbers, here's bed vacancies, if you need someone placed, okay? They turn us down because we're the clerk. And my theory was, if we're sending a commitment to the state, and the state's, your duty is to reach out to the other CSUs, because you have a Harrison County commitment, right? Am I correct on that?
Well, you've sent the, you've, you've sent the, the information to Mona. We don't necessarily have...
Then we have a commitment, we send a certified commitment.
Oh, you sent state hospital.
State hospital. So, I've visited with Mona, and she said, "John, our duty is not to, to, it's the state's duty to reach out at these other CSUs to help you," right?
Right, and that is, and our state hospitals do, they have a list as well, they can see those vacancies.
They're not reaching out, because when we call, no. I mean, we have four beds available negotiating at a CSU. Of what, 25 miles from us, 20 miles? They turn us down, wouldn't even call us back the next day. So, my point is this, we need help when they're committed. We need bed placement. Now, they're working, the board is working through the attorney to get an agreement with these local behavioral hospitals, but it's going to cost additional money to this county. So...
I don't quite understand something, and that's not unusual. I was under the impression, and maybe I don't understand the system fully, never, you know, been involved until the last year, really, in kind of mental health issues. I, I'm not sure I understand something. My understanding is that when somebody comes to the Chancy Clerk, that person's having a problem, goes, somehow or another goes before the judge, and the judge orders that that person receives some help, some whatever.
The writs issued.
My understanding was that since y'all are out of mental health, regional group, you're notified, we need a CSU bed for this person for evaluation. Then, through you, we don't have one here in Harrison County. If we had a bed, that would be the most sensible place to send it. Let me finish my question.
I know, but you don't want to send them somewhere else?
No, that's, wait a minute now. We don't have the beds available in Harrison County. So, I would thought that Pine Belt, you would say, "Well, we don't have one in Harrison County, but we have one in, in Jefferson-Davies County." I don't know.
Can I answer that?
Somewhere off.
Let me answer that for you. You don't, you don't do that on pre-hearing, because you have a psychiatrist, you have a doctor that has to visit, the county has a contract with, here in Harrison County, and you have a public guardian that goes and visits a patient. So, we can't send them to Jeff Davis. I'm talking about a commitment, once there's a hearing and they've been committed by a judge to a state facility. That's what I'm talking about.
What, what, what is, hear me out, what is the CSU?
The CSU is, I mean, from my experience, and Mona will tell you, I was a beginner, just like she has been a beginner with Harrison County, and I have too, on the process, and visiting with other state, you know, departments of mental health, that involuntary mental commitments is not a service that is provided by a mental health region. Am I correct on that?
The Crisis Stabilization Unit, the CSU, can take involuntary commitments. They can take both voluntary and commitment, but the state hospital, what you're talking about, is not the Community Mental Health Center. It is the state-operated program.
I can't, Mark, that's a, help me, because the statute, there's two aspects of, one is the initial writ and the pre-evaluation. The second is, once that evaluation done, and that they determine, judge determines that he needs commitment, so they got to separate them. The first statute simply says that if somebody comes in and files an affidavit, and the court determines their writ should be issued, that person is to be evaluated, pre-evaluated, determined if he needs to be committed. That first statute says it'll be taken to the local mental health, I forgot the name, center.
That's the CSU?
Yes.
CSU is part of a mental health center.
If there's no bed available, this is where this gets a little bit squirrely, if there's no bed available, the court shall order them to be taken to any other licensed hospital, physician, blah, blah, to be evaluated for that, and the county of residence shall pay for that. Now, so, if that happens, then the next step is if they determine they need to be committed, right, or if commitment goes, and basically the same thing occurs, the court determines where they're going to be committed, whether it be the state hospital, or if there's nobody available, and the county of residence shall pay it. This is where the contract, I did draft, or direction a contract proposal to both oceans and to behavioral health.
So, Tim, what I'm trying to get clear in my mind, before there's the court orders a commitment, which then involves the state, if I understand what you're saying, before the court orders a commitment, it orders an evaluation.
Right.
And the evaluation, I was under the assumption, was to go to the CSU. That, he would, he would order that person to report to the CSU or someone at the CSU, then would do the pre-evaluation first. If there's no beds available at that first order for the evaluation, then our mental health folks, Pine Belt, would find another CSU bed. They don't.
Well, they could, I, I don't know whether...
They'll not do that.
Try to assist with that.
Then why in the world are we creating a transportation, the sheriff's transportation, for 300,000, 400,000, what the initial cost is going to be, when we're not going to be able to transport them because we, until the commitment is made?
Right.
But the, the initial evaluation is where we're getting...
They can transport, they, they, the sheriff could transport Mary to a Crisis Stabilization Unit without the commitment. I mean, they, they could. If the, if you've got a bed that's not available at Mona's Crisis Stabilization Unit, and there is one somewhere else, according to statute, the sheriff can transport.
Right, could send them to a R.
That's right. You could go to...
But there is another CSU.
Correct.
Anywhere in the state, there's a CSU. Could you send that person, if we don't have one available in Harrison County, and this person needs a CSU, a bed, a CSU?
Yes.
Can you find, can you say, "I got a bed in Jackson somewhere," or in one of the counties up there, and he can transport that person up there?
For our two CSUs, Jack, uh, Jackson, Jones County here, we can do that because we run the CSUs. The other thing we can and have been doing is saying, "Okay, today Jackson has three empty beds, so you guys can get them there." We can't legally send that person out to them.
How do we, how then do we, if we needed the one in Jackson, you're full of both in Harrison County and in Jones County, how, or who contacts the one in Jackson, sorry, wherever he is? Who contacts them and gets permission to transport that person to Jackson?
Chancy.
Through the judge.
Okay, at this point, let me ask this question, Wendy. As far as, if, if an individual from Harrison County meets that criteria to go to the CSU for that, at that state, what does this, is a CSU, no matter where they are in the state, if they have an available bed, obligated to take that individual? Which I think is part of the problem that we're running into, is that there are refusals to take once committed. So, I guess that's really a question that has to be answered, is what is the obligation of the other CSUs across the state with empty beds to take those individuals?
That is a good point. That's a very good point.
That's the bad...
That's what I'm saying.
Each Crisis Stabilization Unit is operated by their Community Mental Health Center, and they do have reasons that they can deny an individual. It may be, let's say, too violent. And so, they do have reasons that they can deny, and that Community Mental Health Center operates that Crisis Stabilization Unit. The state doesn't operate it. We provide grant funding, but that Community Mental Health Center operates it. We actually had a meeting, Mona, it's part of it as well, with all of the Crisis Stabilization Units last Friday to discuss this, to discuss vacancies, to look at reasons for denial, to try to get everybody on the same page, because you are exactly right. They can deny an individual, and that's on that Crisis Stabilization Unit operated by that Community Mental Health Center.
And they do, by the way.
And this is...
Just one other thing. We have, July the 1st, we have transitioned all the grants to the Community Mental Health Centers and Speed for Service. So, empty bed, no payment, right? So, that's why we're looking at the vacancies across the state.
They would be motivated to take it, because that's how they...
If they're not sending a bed, they're not getting a reassignment.
We hope that.
Which again, went to the meeting on Friday to try to get everyone on the same page to look at this. And I do, I, I think it might be helpful now that I've talked to y'all, I have a better understanding of where some of your concerns are, and how some of our solutions can fit into some of those concerns, and then how we can work also with Pine Belt on some additional ones. So, I'll be happy to kind of put that together, where we can see where we are, and, and kind of lay out some of your main concerns.
It sounds like we have, we have... I think the solution that you have recommended of the additional beds for Harrison County... I think the solution that you have recommended of the additional beds for Harrison County or for Pine Belt, at least we solve our initial problem if we don't have enough beds.
I think it's, it's not just one, I mean, it's going to be the services in the community. It's going to be enhancement of security at the crisis stabilization unit. And it's either going to be see a crisis, a diversion center or crisis stabilization. And when Mona prepares that for y'all, and I know she's looking at a lot of data, there's great data on both sides. And I know a diversion center is not something that we have a lot of experience with here in Mississippi. But when you look at some of these models in Texas and Kansas and other states, you do see a high number of individuals being able to be diverted. I know you see crisis stabilization, 16 beds, that's what we want. But that diversion center, I mean, look at that proposal and think about that option as well. Because you can divert a lot of individuals and get that initial assessment done right then and there. So you'll have to kind of look at that.
One question and I'll shut up, I promise.
And then I'm going to let Kelly talk. I'm going to let Kelly talk. These hot deals are.
Well, you look fantastic.
You know, I look forward, I look forward to a diversion center, okay? And you have, and it accomplishes the goal. But still, you're going to have people that do need to be treated. And that diversion center, does that person continue to be held if they're chose, if it's a chosen path to go through the court system for involuntary commitment? Do they continue to stay at the diversion center or are they? Okay, so then you would have to have placement for that person, again.
There will be, yes, you're right.
Would be another pre-hearing situation. And where I want to try to clear up something with Marlon, Mr. Lattner, is that pre-hearing has to stay in Harrison County because of our public guardian visiting the patient, because of our psychiatrists or psychologists under contract, because of the medical. That's for the pre-evaluation. They have to stay here. So, go ahead.
I was just saying, can they do telehealth?
Can they just zoom?
Can they do zoom? So you're, all those three people, because all the, did all the CSUs have telehealth capabilities? Where you could just do telehealth and your person doesn't have to trip.
Me? No, I'm doing something.
I have no doubt that you could jump on that and make that happen.
If you, if you had a person, they could do that individually virtually.
At the diversion center?
The psychiatrist or the psychologist could do those evaluations via telehealth. Instead of having to go.
So we need, we can, we can put that in place because all of our courtrooms are now being, we're buying monitors for that. So anyway. We'll make that happen. Pre-hearing, they'll be placed somewhere. And that's the issue right now. We, and CSU's full, we have to send them to a murder sorority for pre-hearing. They get evaluated by the, however we put in place, if we can have it that way. Then the commitment. The commitment is still a bed issue after a diversion center.
You will still have individuals, absolutely, that have.
And then the state, the state is leaving there and putting this in the communities for treatment. So we have a CSU pool after the diversion, goes through the process. I'm sorry, Tim.
You're not making, I was thinking about something else.
Okay. I thought you were hoping for me to shut up.
I actually was thinking about something else completely different.
Okay. Can you share? See, the diversion center does not create the beds that are needed.
No, it attempts to divert people from needing the beds. But you will still have people that need beds.
Okay, okay.
Good deal. I know you're tired and you don't want to get off the heels.
I mean, I was making a joke, kind of.
But I feel you.
Okay, I'm going to let Kelly.
Good deal.
Mona, you feel with the whole understanding of the transport?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope so.
But I was under the, just before we started, I was under the impression that we would be transporting for the CSU. We're only talking about transporting for the actual commitments now.
No, all of them.
No, all of them, every one of them. So if they got, if Mona and them say, and this wasn't brought up, but if, if there's a, if there's no beds available at CSU and go for them. And in their catchment area in Jones County, they've got two beds available. And you've got two people sitting in the ER.
But it's only in Jones County.
Well, other places.
They can go anywhere. But their catchment area is Jones County. Pine Belt, we're within our catchment area.
Well, if they can go anywhere, who's going to make the arrangements for them to go other than in the catchment area?
I gotta go through the state and then we gotta dial, dial, dial.
So you, possibly your transportation units could be used for another CSU somewhere else.
These guys are going to be rolling north, south, east and west.
See all these beds that are available?
Not unless y'all put something ship out.
But you gotta, you gotta get those beds.
I gotta call.
If it's not in their catchment area.
One more question before we get off.
I want to make sure I understand.
Now, I wanted Marlon to understand this because it's, it's.
We can visit with him, I promise you. Let's, you and I visit with him.
Oh yeah, include me on that.
I was operating under the false impression that y'all, if, if we needed a CSU bed and there was not one available in your area, that you could get one from somewhere else. But you say that's not your responsibility and not your deal. Okay.
That's poorly.
Okay, I got that. I've got that. You thought that was it?
And one more question before we leave this subject, because this is on the table now. Do we still need, if we increase the budget for transportation, do we still need a contact with a private entity?
That's a good question, Tim.
That's why, that's the question. And so. You know, the question, just so everybody knows here, the contract was drafted and sent to all of them, sent to everybody to review. The question came back from them, because I put in their general language and said they would not bill at greater than Medicare, Medicaid rates. I quoted the statute deal with inmates. Question came back from one of them that said they wanted a charge of set rate, $800 a day, I think. I have no idea whether that's Medicaid rates or not. I was concerned about it because the last time that was the rate. And their question was, the last time the rate was $800. That's Medicaid, that's why I don't know that. So y'all, I'm trying to figure that out. And I sent to the moral hospitals representative and he's answering that. That's the holdup on the contract if we want one is how do you bill? And I also put a seven day limit on it that the court would enter a seven day order so that they couldn't go beyond seven days and get paid unless the judge extended it by order so that you'd have some ability to kind of monitor.
I would say this, Tim, I think initially we would need it. But once Ms. Bailey and everybody gets the plan, these plans in place, hopefully we wouldn't need them.
Yeah, it's only, only, will only be there if you need it. I mean, it'll only be if they don't have a bed.
Mona said something earlier that, that I caught. But if you're transporting a person that's violent, if we're transporting a person, anybody we transport, they're handcuffed, they're secured. So if you, if you get another, go up for contract with AMR or whoever you may use to do this, how do they secure that person? You know, what's, what's the security measures in that? They can't do anything unless, unless, well, I'm not taking, taking anything with. But they won't take a violent person unless CIT officers are there. So what, what does, what does another company do?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with what we commit it to.
No, I just want, I just wanted you to understand it because it's kind of confusing.
The other, the other hospitals have the ability to chemically and mechanically restrain people and I think that's what they do.
We don't, I wish we did.
And I don't want to either, but we don't.
Hopefully your shoe's a little bit soft.
I'm not sure about that.
I think Kelly probably does have much Medicaid for you versus mental health centers.
Well, I can, well, I don't, we don't deal in the hospital business except from the state hospitals and they're not able to bill Medicaid. So any of these that you're talking about that would be able to bill Medicaid, and I guess the question would be, is that service that they're quoting $800, let's just say, is that a psychiatric treatment facility or not? And so if it is, I guess that would, that doesn't sound unreasonable really. That's probably a going rate. I don't know if Medicaid has a set rate for that or not. Again, our hospitals are under the Institute for Mental Disease exclusion, DIMB exclusion, and are forbidden from billing Medicaid.
I was suspicious that they wanted to set $800 rather than just say, you're going to bill at Medicaid rates. Because I know Medicaid does this all the time. So whatever the rate is, the rate is, why would you want to set it at $800 a day?
It could be a cost reimbursement model. It used to be. And for some Medicaid services, they paid fee for service and they've moved that over the years, like you say. That's, that's changed. But I think what you're seeing lately is these hospitals, from what I understand, again, just as a spectator who knows people that deal with this on a daily basis. These hospitals are meeting, what, 10 years ago they met for physical health, which was Medicare said, this person's been readmitted, we're not going to pay for this readmission. You're going to pay for it in hospital. Because they had surgery, they got infection, they came back, we're not paying them. But you're going to treat them and you're going to figure out how to pay for it. They're starting to do that currently with mental health reemissions also. I think that's where you're probably seeing some of the hospitals making motion where they may not have prior to because they were getting paid each time they came in. Medicare is starting to stop that, I believe. That's my understanding.
That's, that's an assumption that they can be cured. If you come back, Medicaid is not going to pay for it. There's an assumption that you were cured when you left.
Well, that's Medicare, Mr. Lattner, just so we're clear. But that's where they're, if they have Medicare, that's who they could be billing too.
Compared to the physical, I can understand somebody physically being cured. I go and I have a surgery and I'm finished. Mental health is not, I don't think at some point you can say somebody's cured.
But do you have the supports in the community to do it?
That's not your decision, I understand.
Well, and Medicaid usually follows what Medicare does eventually. They think those are good ideas and come up with their own.
Sir, our reimbursement rate for the CSU, which is pretty much the same service you would get, is about $504 a day.
And I said that to them and I said they couldn't do it at that rate. I mean, that's.
But Tim, I would need, just me and the whole advisor, $800, but assuming that we're not going to use them that much. But as a need, a carryover for a need, I think whatever we can negotiate with.
What he just said may explain why they don't like the language will be billed according to Medicaid rates because they think if this person comes back now, they're not going to get paid at all.
So moving forward, Cindy, this is your general counsel, right, for state mental health?
Yes, ma'am.
Could our attorney call you directly and figure out the statutes, what we're allowed to do and how to push the boundaries in different ways?
Absolutely. And I've worked with both the attorney before and that's fine. One thing I would just throw out, I don't know, $800 a day seems high to me, but I'm not in the fiscal stuff. That's Kelly's job. But if, if they're, if they're saying $800 a day, I think you need to go back to, well, so are you going to provide psychiatric services for that $800 a day? Because to me, if you're just holding them until they can get a court order or a CSU services, $800 a day is a lot to be paying for a person that's just being held in a safe environment. They're not really doing or providing any treatment to them.
The court order reflects that, they're getting treatment.
Treatment, okay.
They, they sent a long list of treatment they would give. It had alcohol and drug abuse treatment. I took that out because as I understand the statute, you're not supposed to take somebody as alcohol and drug, that's a different procedure.
There's a different statute for that, yes, sir. But y'all have my one type in both.
They are regular treatment.
Sure. And so are you CFO? I'm sorry.
Yes, Kelly, CFO.
So I'm just going to get. Thank you. I'm going to get back to the basics. When we went to Jackson a while back, I was stunned to hear that y'all have a $635 million budget. So in my mind, that means you're going to give a little to each county as part of mental health. But then I heard, no, y'all really just decide what grants go to where. Can you help me just big picture understand where's that massive budget going?
I'm about to try.
Perfect.
So you have, I think charts, maybe one is a, what's a two pie chart side by side. That on the left side gives you, and I apologize, one of those figures I want to do the number for, but it's the general funds, that's the blue portion. This is what's sacred to the legislature. General funds, they have sole authority to appropriate those. And this is our portion they appropriated this current fiscal year we just started. And that's 214 million approximately, it's a little over that. Now, other special funds, which is the yellow piece of that pie chart on the left side, is the yellow, the largest slice. Those other special funds are basically everything else that we have. Any Medicaid that these agencies have, any social security where they're representative payee, any patient revenue, donations from philanthropic billionaires, it doesn't matter what it is. If it's not one of these other more specific categories, that's where it goes. The legislature also has the authority to tell us how much of that we have in spending permission or authority. I've got what, that pie chart on the right of this is basically what I refer to as an exploded view of that blue section of general funds, okay? So that section of general funds is what, again, drives most of the mental health pieces. Because those other special funds and things on that left side and the federal funds, some of that does. But those other special funds are primarily for the other side of our large operation, part of the operations, which is the intellectual developmental disabilities, what we refer to as intermediate care facilities for IDD. So that's where most of that Medicaid revenues and things that go. So that's why I'm choosing to focus right here on those general funds. That exploded view has behavioral health programs there in the brownish area of $93 million almost. That $93 million are those state hospitals. That's that behavioral health component and all of their subsidiaries. The Medicaid IDDD state share, which is just to the left of that of 22 million, that's, these are just estimates for this current budget, this current fiscal year. That $22 million is for the state's portion of IDDD services across the state. We pay the state's share. So if someone goes into home health for an intellectual developmental disability, when they receive that service, Medicaid reimburses that provider wherever they are, if it's under their stipulations. And then they build the department of mental health to pay the state's share of that. So what we refer to as the FMAP state share portion, which is federal medical assistance percentage. Continuing on to the left, we've got subsidies, which is Medicaid state share at DMH programs. That's the state's share of those programs operations, again, mainly those ICF, IID agencies. And then continuing on down, which is more of the portion of what you're asking about, Ms. Powers, which is the service budget, community services, almost $44 million. That, or that's the portion that's the general funds piece that we grant out to providers through the, through our services. So that's the sub-recipient grants there or within that portion.
To the providers or to the counties?
To the providers.
Directly to the providers?
To certified providers.
And is it decided by per capita how many people we have in each area?
It's decided on what's happened historically over time and by what needs there are in shifting those. So not quite as, not quite the formula, more of what's happened in the past.
The trend.
Yeah, with changes as needed based on needs around the state. And then there's also, there's more than just that in sub-recipient grants. So the federal funds, which is currently with more COVID funds, about twice what it usually is. I've got it here about 45 million, which is that orange portion of that left side. Usually that's about 25 million or so each year. And these are block grant funds mainly. That's where most of that federal funding is, as Ms. Bailey mentioned earlier. That is also almost completely sent to sub-recipient providers. So really you're looking there at currently being closer to 85, 90 million. There's also a little bit in state support special funds. And I say a little bit, it's a good bit, $9 million of this 18.9 million in healthcare funds. That also goes out in sub-recipient grants. We're around 90 to 100 million dollars currently because of COVID funds going out in sub-recipient grants to providers all across the state.
Those COVID funds are one-time grants, right? I mean, you're not going to get that replaced every year.
We believe that, yes, sir. And that's part of the challenge with them.
So on the service budget, community services, if we have people, let's say just one man who does not have Medicaid, does not have Medicaid, he's not old enough, he's not young enough. Are y'all paying for that or do we pay for that? Will he get reimbursed, I guess?
It depends on the service. And so that Pine Belt doesn't get, nor does any community mental health center get reimbursement for all of their services through us, through us alone, of course. Much of it's Medicaid. And that's really their largest payer source is Medicaid.
If an individual doesn't have Medicaid or Medicare, I'm sorry about that.
This is the supplement to that.
This is the supplement for that, okay.
This is what, this is supposed to be, and the block grant funding, the federal funding, that's where that's supposed to fill in the hole.
Gotcha.
Going, moving on, just because I know I'm in between everyone and lunch here, the next chart that I have is institutional care spending versus community services spending. We haven't finished up this. We haven't finished up fiscal year 2021, so 2020 was the best information we had at the time, and it's a little bit right brain, left brain, counterintuitive way, they're, they're labeled correctly, but they're on the wrong side. So community services, about three hundred and seventy-seven million versus two hundred and eighty-eight million in institutional, institution is three hundred and seventy-seven versus two hundred and eighty-eight back in fiscal year 2012. Fast forward to 2020, and you're at three hundred and six million in community service, excuse me, in institutional care, and three hundred and seventy-seven million in the community services area. So that's been a pretty big shift over time, Ms. Bailey mentioned that there was that thirteen point three million, there's also the recent four million, there's also the funding that the legislature has given over the past twelve years or so, which started as ten million, went to sixteen point one million, and then we added more to that, they've added more to that, it's about three hundred and twenty, but I think if I remember correctly, it's been shifted over there. Now, this, as just a caveat, does include community mental health centers, Medicaid revenue, at least a pretty good estimate of what that is, is built in here, because that is what the state's putting into community services, even through the Medicaid program. So that's built in here, just to give a better representation across the state of the spending. The next, well, and final slide really is less of a point than either of those first two, which is kind of where our money's spent. So the fiscal year 2022 budget expenditures is a, what's it spent on? Salaries and wages, contractual commodities, and so normally with healthcare, healthcare operation, you're probably around three quarters of your funding, your, your budget would end up going to salaries and wages. It's a very labor-intensive service, of course. The only reason this blue part of that chart, that three hundred and twenty-eight million, the only reason that is closer to half, as you can see by this chart, is because we have so many subsidies, loans, and grants pieces that are built in there.
Okay, so the grants come from that pie?
Right, they're not, they're not, that's a subsidies, loans, grants pie, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's, that's where we end up paying those, and if you took those out, you would have what's closer to operational pieces, and you could see that would easily come back to that three quarters somewhat of what we spend, how we spend our money, so.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions regarding that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could real quick, so basically, we've identified some problems. I want to thank Mr. McAdams for being the catalyst for this, there's just no doubt about it, he called the first meeting, that's been the catalyst for all of this. But what we know is we need a single point of entry or a diversion center. I think that's the preferable model over sixteen more beds, because I think the diversion center will have more favorable outcomes and ultimately serve the county taxpayer better. We identified additional transport with the sheriff, that, that is, by my estimation, a temporary measure, Dr. Lattner, because if we can get the diversion center in place and other things start falling into place, we would no longer need that.
Thank you.
Behavioral health court, Mona, myself, Senator Delano, Dr. Porter, and Judge Alfonso, and Judge Ready on the municipal level traveled to Hattiesburg, and we viewed their mental health court system, and we're going to try to duplicate that Biloxi and then spread it throughout the coast. Hopefully, that acts as a diversionary, because that catches mental health folks at a misdemeanor level, and it gets, tries to get them treated and out of the system. So that's not a problem. We, some things we've accomplished, we've got, Singing River Asher, I think, Mr. McAdams, they're on board now, they're, they're more responsive and helpful than they were. Is that their statement?
They didn't understand, I reached out to the CEO, they understand, and then with the help of Kent Nico, we reached out to Merritt, by the way, I didn't know this, but Memorial owns fifty percent of Merritt. So we have three hospital emergency rooms that are taking for pre-hearing placement for evaluations when CSU is full.
Okay, so that's been an accomplishment. We've also.
Let me stop you there, I'm sorry. CSU works with these emergency rooms daily and with us to make sure if they have a bed, they transfer them, and the sheriff has assisted in that too. So they take them when they can.
We also send people over to the pre-balance assessment.
Which segues into my next point, which is the communication between Mr. McAdams and Pine Belt, I think is the best it's ever been. I think that they're coming to be a great team.
Hopefully.
Is, is my assessment of that, I think that's an accomplishment. Myself and Senator Delano and probably Senator Wiggins and some others are going to work with Ms. Uvex. I've already emailed Mr. Holloman, I'm waiting on a response now on some statutory language that he may want us to tackle, and I'm sure he'll, he'll begin with me on that. And then staffing at the state hospitals, Sheriff Peterson stated he has three folks that need to be in state hospitals. The reality is that Director Bailey and the DMH is facing a, probably an all-time low on staffing, and they're trying to increase the pay and create more positions, know, better fund the positions they have, they've had to decrease the positions that they have in total to be able to do that. So monumental task there, not making excuses, but the reality is, you can have all the beds you want, you can have as much square footage as you want, if you don't have the people to make the system run, you don't have a system, and right now, our system's handicapped that way. But I project, as the benefits go away, as the economy levels out a bit, I think the staffing will get better, and the benefits they offer will induce people into coming. So that's kind of where we're at, and if y'all have anything for Scott or I, you know, Director Bailey and her team's taken a lot of the hits today, but if y'all have anything for us that we can help with, please do. I do have one question on behalf of the county that hasn't been asked yet. The county pays for sixteen beds at the CSU, okay? They do not?
Three counties pay for sixteen.
Okay, well, we counties do. Let's incorporate our, our sister counties in with this.
Each county does their county contributions.
But, but they pay for that.
Well, the legislature, the legislature also, we also give some pants for that.
And the, and the one point four million grant that we give to the county, the population comes from the general fund that you appropriated.
Sure, sure. So I'm, I'm taking with broad strokes, but the point is this, somebody's paying for sixteen beds, and Dr. Lattner asked about two meetings ago, when we only have twelve, what happens with all the money that you paid for the sixteen, but you're four short for some amount of time? Is the county to be made whole on what they paid for the sixteen beds? All three counties, the state? Who, or is it just something, and this is not attacking them, I'm asking for purely fiscal perspective, can the county be made whole and be reimbursed for the shortage of beds that they've incurred for that amount of time? Is there any way to calculate, bring that down?
Can I, let me, let me throw something at you. The county contribution that we receive is about providing all services in the county. I know that Gulf Coast, previously, they had X amount of dollars for general mental health services, and then they had CSU beds. That's not how our, our business model operates, it's about, the county's contributing for all services, so we don't, and then, again, CSU is part of that. We do not provide X number of beds reserved for anybody, it's a first come, first served basis, or in general down here, it's the three counties that we serve. Now, it, just because of populations, those numbers typically work out that seventy-five to eighty percent of the beds that we have are Harrison County. I will also say that those county contributions equal somewhere between four and six percent of our overall budget. So the, the cost of providing services in all of our catchment areas, that's what those numbers equal. Also, DMH's contribution to our budget from a grant standpoint is somewhere about sixteen percent of our budget. So when you say, is it possible for the county to be made whole, the county is still getting those services. What hasn't been talked about is that across our counties, we provide somewhere between six and seven million dollars of indigent care that doesn't, isn't DMH, it isn't a grant, it isn't anything else, it's when somebody comes in that building, they have no payer source. We have a responsibility, regardless of what our mandate is, we have a responsibility as a community mental health center to provide services to those individuals because they need it, and we have to give it to them. So those are the numbers that haven't been talked about. So again, counties, you guys are spending a lot of money, and we know that, and God, I hope we're providing the services, and we continue to push to provide those. But it's not paying the cost of providing those mental health services in any county for what is contributed, regardless of the dollar amount that you guys are spending, and trust me, we respect the dollar amount. But I think those are the numbers that you guys need to understand.
I think some of the confusion of that is, and I don't know why, but when we, when we appropriate or approve payments to Pine Belt, we actually, it shows, or at least on our agenda, excuse me, we're paying so much for CSU, it's separated, the CSU bill, y'all don't send us that bill like that.
Well, actually.
Because of your resolution with us, it was one item, and we clearly talked about that before seducing the resolution.
Because your budget currently for this year is set up where a certain percentage is taken from Chancery's budget, I think, and then the other is coming out of the county's general budget to pay for those. So we agreed that we would bill it that way, but it was an understanding within the resolution that there is no separation, we, we are, you are not paying for the CSU bed, which that number I think is six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars is what is, that overall budget line item. That, even though it's in your budget that way, is not how that is distributed, that is paid to the organization to provide mental health services for the entire county.
And even if it was, it costs us two point five million a year to run the CSU. In Harrison, we get one million sixty thousand something dollars, and then even if you added, say we go down there and you add that, that six hundred thousand, it still falls way short. But back to your question, it's now fee for service, so if there's not someone in that bed, you don't get paid, but you still have all the bills that you've got to pay as well.
So we may.
I don't know about making whole, but we're in trouble with the budget.
So we have a grant, we have a grant here for these three counties of a little over a million dollars. If we don't have a bed in that bed, we don't, just because we have the grant out there does not mean that we can draw off of that grant unless we are providing a daily service with somebody in a bed. Now, I don't think that's a problem down here, I'm just saying that out loud so that everybody knows that, I don't think that's a problem because we're full. But just know that the costs are greater than the dollars that are being provided. We have to be creative and find other means of payer sources to provide, to cover those costs. One of the reasons why we're here and others aren't is because we have successfully come up with a business model that functions well across all of our, our counties to do what needs to be done.
Okay, well, I think this is going to bring us to a conclusion. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Senator Delano, we didn't give you an opportunity to speak, but if you want to have anything you want to add to, we'd appreciate it. Okay?
I would like to say this, I appreciate y'all coming.
Very nice.
Listen, I know your frustration talking, trying to communicate with people who don't fully understand, and, and I will admit, I have, you know, I don't fully understand how complicated it is, so I appreciate your patience and dealing with us, don't assume that we're being aggravated with you, we're not, I'm trying to learn.
And that frustration on my end either.
Well, thank you. And Kevin and Scott, I appreciate y'all doing this too as well, but thank y'all for coming.
Well, can I add a good note to let you guys know? We do have all these services in place, and since February first, we've done over fifteen hundred entakes, and all of those people, well, probably about eighty percent of those people have seen psychiatrists or nurse practitioners, and so one of the other things we're doing with that is, the model before was these people just see a doctor, and we're trying to expand that so they can get into these other services, so it's not just medications, and when they stop taking their meds, they end up at the CSU. So there are multiple ways we're trying to come at this, but we've gotten a lot of people in, adult includes, we have all these services that are at some level at least, most of them are at full capacity, so we're moving and going with this, and please know, we are thankful for all the support you guys do give us. As Dawn said, we know y'all are paying a lot of money, but honestly, y'all are getting a lot back for that money too.
And we appreciate you, Pine Belt, being willing to come here. And I love your diversion ideas, that, that three-pronged approach, that I think can be the answer.
I'm really happy to hear what you're saying, Ms. Bailey, some of the problems.
But I am going to put out there, from a CFO's perspective, please understand that diversion center or a sixteen-bed CSU or whatever it is, one point two covers a portion of that. And that in order for it to work, it needs to be funded and funded well so that the system operates.
Yes.
Well, we found that out the hard way.
I know.
I think we did too.
The question I have is how, from Moore's concern, or how do we come up with a budget so they know what they're dealing with, if they decide to go one or the other?
I'm trying to put that.
So we really get some input.
Frankly, I got data, and none of our data all match, so right now, I'm trying to figure out what data is accurate.
And, and we've, in the past, we've discussed a ballpark so that people have it in their minds, and we use our Westway CSU as kind of that, that ballpark number, and that is somewhere between two point five and three million dollars a year to run our CSU.
Because both of y'all, you're talking about both CSUs?
No, just our Westway. The one here, we're still trying to figure out what those dollars are, I expect it's going to be somewhere in that neighborhood, but the building, the facility situation is different here than it is for the one that we have at Westway, so that's going to drive some of the costs, and I'm not quite sure what those numbers are yet, but I still think you're going to be over two million dollars a year to run that facility.
Okay, all right. We really appreciate everyone coming out, saying, hopefully we don't have to see you soon. We really appreciate y'all coming.
Before y'all turn, can y'all spread upon the minutes the public notice?
Yes, I'll talk into, but as an interim meeting, Moore needs to, need a motion to spread on the minutes of the interim.
Second.
Second, okay. Got into the discussion, it's been a motion of probably second, if we can, if it's up to the minutes. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion aye.
Targeting the turn.
And now with that, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion adjourned. Really appreciate everyone coming out.